You can start the video and audio recording. Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. The September 21st, Bellefonte Borough Council meeting is called to order. We'd like to have a pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence in honor of the passing of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg last Friday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic
which stands
one nation
under God
indivisible liberty
justice for all
Thank you. Our roll call, please.
Mr. Eaton?
Here.
Ms. Hmboski?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Prendergast?
I'm here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
I'm here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Brackfield?
Here.
Mr. Clayton?
Here. Sorry, sort of.
Mrs. Clayton, sorry about that. Sorry about that, and I know the mayor is excused.
May I have approval of the minutes? Need a motion and a second.
I'll motion we accept the minutes.
Prendergast. And who's going second?
I'll second Johnson.
Johnson. Any changes? Go ahead, Doug.
Couple, I can't find my notes. I think it was page 11, second paragraph. Oh, here we go. I found a page. Oh. Well, the one's on top is page 16. The bottom paragraph, it says Walker mentioned that Pendott has rolled against crosswalks. I think that was Ms. Clayton that made that comment.
Thank you.
On page 11. First paragraph, it says Brackville offered that before COVID-19, the council meetings were open to the public and agendas are on the website. I think, I think that was myself. Randy, can you chime in on that? I think we were responding to a woman who was making suggestions to our website, and I encouraged her to participate in the meeting.
Yeah, I agree, Doug. I looked at that and I thought, I don't remember saying that, or, you know, I did later on mention some things, but I think you're right. I couldn't, I always thought maybe it was Ralph, and I couldn't remember who did say it.
Those are the two.
I have, I had something, actually I had two things on, in the same general line, on page six. Says on, in the second graph there, Clayton asked if she voted no to tabling, what we should be voting for. I was actually the one that asked that question. I'm pretty sure. And the same thing, something similar on, it looks like page 15. About, I thought that I had asked about why the fireworks ordinance would restrict only the historic district. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that was on my mind, and I thought I was the one who asked that.
I know, I did ask a question like that, yeah.
Okay, then we must have been thinking alike.
I think it was Clayton, it wasn't.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I did ask why it was just restricted to the historic district.
Okay, must have been thinking along the same lines.
Yeah.
Any other amendments to the sing non, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. There's nothing on the consent. So unless somebody has something that we don't know about, we'll move on to the written communication.
Like we're moving on. The first item is about electric vehicle webinar series coming up through September 26th through October 4th. Like to ask our council president to maybe add a few more comments.
Okay, there was an attachment in your packet that was put in Word format. We usually do things in PDF. I asked that it be put in Word format to make it easy for you. So that if you are interested in registering for any of these four sessions, you can easily click on the links and register for them. And these webinar series are open to the public. So the first one on Monday, September 28th at 11:00 PM is looking at the benefits of electric vehicles from municipal governments. Don and I will be doing a presentation at that webinar. It will include us as a small community. Lansdale is a medium-sized community and Pittsburgh is a large city. About how the benefits are for all different types of populations throughout the state. That's at 11:00 AM. On Tuesday, September 29th, there's one on the benefits and basics of driving EVs for businesses. So if you're a business owner and you're interested in looking at the possibility of looking at electric vehicles, that would be the one for you. All of these are at 11:00 AM. On Wednesday, September 30th, there is one for the benefits and basics of driving EVs for residents of Pennsylvania. And this one is going to be live with, almost like an open mic after a simple presentation by DEP and their, the people they have requested to do the presentation. So if you're a resident and are interested in electric vehicles, this one might be the one for you. And then finally, on October 1st at 11:00 AM, there's going to be the benefits and basics of driving electrical vehicles for fleet managers. This would be things like, like us of the borough having a fleet of police vehicles or CADA and their buses. Or those kinds of issues. And that one's at 11:00 AM on October 1st. So you can go, the agenda is on the website. I would request that we put this particular email from DEP, not DEP, Department of GCED, sorry, on our Facebook page and our website so that the public, if they're interested in one of these more webinars, they can click and join and register in advance.
Sure. Good to go.
Yep, I'm done.
Okay, next item is just, we came across the copy of the court decision that involved Governor Wolf in the COVID-19 actions. It's there for your review. The next item is a note from Sally Hauser, who is, I believe, on our, in our meeting. And she is writing about Victorian Christmas, our special event takes place December 11th and 12th. She's asking, in general, closing of the streets are going to have most of the special event outdoors. So they're looking at closing Allegheny from Lynn to Bishop and High from the courthouse down to Spring. And there's a whole, you know, list of how activities would be managed, given the COVID restrictions. But I think the big thing is having the event in the roads, having the event, you know, getting permission to close the main streets in town.
I, I'd like to refer this to Streets. I think it's a wonderful plan she's got. I think there's some minor tweaks that might be done. I think we could handle that better by doing it through the committee and then bringing it back at the next meeting, if that's okay.
That's perfect.
Great.
That's good.
Thank you, Sally. We'll be in touch with the link to the committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, should we add this to the agenda for the Streets Committee meeting this week?
Yeah.
We have one coming up, so.
Right, I think on the 24th.
24th, yeah. Because we'll need to get that paperwork in soon.
You're right, so we'll be in touch with you, Sally. We have a meeting on Thursday this week.
Okay, alright. One of the other things that came up when we, I met with a couple other people that I want to tell you. Somebody had gone to the antique, antique show, and they actually had one way in and one way out. And they kept track of how many people were coming in and going out so that they limited the number of people. I don't know, well, I don't know how we could do that, but that's something we may think about. The other thing was that, oh, that was, the other thing went out of my mind. Anyway, that's what we were, that's what we were thinking about, trying to figure out a way to do that. And that might be something that we might need some help with as far as barricading some, some areas. So that's the only other thing, other addition that I have.
Alrighty, we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
The next item is from a resident on Curtain Street in regard to our current ordinance, which regulates parking of trailers on streets. Basically, the resident's asking for council to consider updating the ordinance and is basically stating it's not as effective as it could be or should be.
So again, this is another Streets issue, so we'll refer to Streets.
Okay. I'll also add that to the agenda as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any next?
Interject on that one. I've, I've got a neighbor who likes to park his trailer on the street a lot, so I can understand the curtain concern. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Next item is a letter from Center County Government, more particularly Margaret Gray, the administrator, in regard to kind of an expanded use of the COVID or the CARES Act funding that we believe that we will be receiving from the county. Basically stating that it can be covered for ordinary police department expenses. So it's rather good news. We'll be, you know, following that, but I just wanted you to be aware that it looks like we have some opportunity here.
So let me ask this. So basically what we're doing would be to recommend that Lori work with the county on this submission?
Well, you know, prior to this meeting, the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, we approved the agreement. And basically at that point, it was to add up all our receipts or send receipts over. But what my understanding is, we could still do that and/or use some police expenses to capture, you know, the maximum funding for the borough. So I would just say, make sure, I would make sure Lori has this and work with the county on whatever documentation they need.
Ralph, if I could add, the plan is, is we'll submit now with this new, with this new guideline, we'll submit for the police just for this COVID, the 64,000 that we've already signed up for. And we'll, we'll be able to use all the other expenditures on the second round that the county's going to come out with later shortly, in a short period of time.
Excellent. So I don't think there's any action council has to take. We just wanted you to be aware of it.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking down, I don't have it noted on the agenda, but we did receive a hand-delivered copy of a petition through Councilmember Johnson had hand-delivered it. It was in relation to the mask ordinance, so I think I did send it out with the packet so that everybody had a copy, but that's there for your review as well. I believe that's all the written communications that we have for this evening.
Does anybody have any other written communications? Was that a hand raised, Doug? You need to unmute yourself.
I was, I was thinking you were going to say oral, and I do not have any written, so, but I do have something to offer.
Okay, so if there's no more written, we'll move to oral. Doug, go ahead.
Well, as we spoke before the meeting, you asked if somebody would find out about the COVID testing site at the Nettie Mall. Wanted to make that announcement, just to remind our residents. So there is a COVID testing center being set up from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on September 25th, 26th, 29th, and 30th, and October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Patients are not required to show symptoms of COVID-19 in order to be tested. No appointment is necessary, but a photo ID or an insurance card is required. Registration will also be completed on site, so that's the information you might have been looking for. It's at the Nettie Mall.
Thank you.
Somebody is more technically advanced than I am.
That was, that was also provided by the Express, so that was where I saw the article, I believe.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Center Daily Times website.
Okay, I'm on the Express, so I'm looking at the same thing you just read.
Okay, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. I had something, and now it's gone completely out of my head.
Move on.
If it comes back, I'll say it later, but right now I can't remember what it was.
I have that feeling all the time.
Any other oral comments? Sing non, our mayor is not available this evening, so we're going to move his comments about the Census 2020 down to my report. That's okay.
That works.
We don't have police here this evening, so we'll just move on to my announce. Let me pull this up real quick. First of all, the Census will be winding down on September 30th, which is nine days away. And so beginning on Constitution Day, which was September 17th through Sunday, September 20th. Census Bureau partners nationwide are reminding our networks that time is running out to respond to the 2020 Census. Don, can you quickly report what we're doing as our final push for the Census?
Well, we put an ad in the Gazette. I think there were two weeks back in August that finalized it. We had to have everything wrapped up to submit for reimbursement by September 30th. We did receive a check today for $1,673, and we'll receive the balance approximately $375. Here, we just submitted that today, so that would be, I think last year we put in our budget $2,000 for Census 2020, and because of the grant, we were able to save that $2,000.
Great, thank you. So just to give you a little idea of where we are at here in Bellefonte, I went on to the Census site this afternoon. Nationwide, about 95% of individuals have responded to the Census. We are not doing that as well. The Half Moon Hill area has had a response rate of 66.1%, as of two days ago. The rest of the town is at 81.4%, which comes out to an average for the entire town of Bellefonte of 73.5%. The Census Bureau says that we have not, that we have not contacted 4% of all residents in the State College Area Census region. I looked at what that was, so this is not, may not be very helpful, but it's the entire central swath of the state from New York to Maryland. So if you were to make a line from the New York border down to Maryland with us in the middle, they've had 96%, so this is not looking particularly good for us. So I'm hoping that all the citizens here in Bellefonte who have not yet responded to the Census, please do so, because this will give us about $1,600 per person who is to the local government, to our schools, to our community, if you respond. We will be losing that money if you don't. The deadline, as I said, is September 30th. And what I, finally, the first thing I would like to do is to thank Carol King, who was our liaison between the Census Bureau and the Complete Counts Committee. She will be, her last day of work for the Census Bureau is September 26th. She has been a, a wellspring of support for getting not only Bellefonte, but Center County attempts at getting our count cap to do. So if Carol, if you're listening this evening, kudos and thank you for all of your work. That's the end of my report. Any questions?
The door knockers, are they quitting on this at September 30th also?
Yes, according to federal government, they have to end the count on September 30th. It was originally supposed to go to October 31st, but in July, the executive branch of the federal government shut, decided now to shut down on September 30th.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Any other questions? Saying none, move on to building a property. Ann?
I do not have anything this week.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question for you. What's going on with the waterfront, anything? The gamble mill?
Well, there's, I mean, it's not, it's normally under the jurisdiction of the Building and Property Committee, but I can comment on what I'm aware of. The waterfront property, you know, was, you know, bought last year by a developer. Of course, they intended to start a planning process with construction of a hotel. Obviously, when the occupancy rates dropped off the charts, they slowed down. They're still there, they're still interested, but you're, you are applying for some additional grant funds. They did renew the NPDES permit, which has to do with building next to the stream, developing next to the stream, runoff control and things like that. So it's still positive. They're still out there. They're still looking at ways to move forward, given the climate and everything. With the gamble mill, you can see there's, they're, they're over there renovating, constructing. And we just had some harbor-related, what's on the agenda tonight? They're making just some minor modifications to the doorways and those types of things, but they're well underway. The grant slash loan, the grant that the borough received from the state and will be a loan to the owners of the gamble mill is within a whisker of being totally completed and the funds being transferred, so it's, it's very positive. I don't know if Dawn or Joanne want to add anything.
That, that's right, Ralph, on the, on the loan. We'll transfer that money to the Virgilio Investments on Wednesday. That transfer should transpire. I do have a building and property issue related to gamble mill. One of the, one of the parts of the agreement that we had with those Virgilio Investments is that we would put up a concrete wall in the raceway. We had a design completed on that, and we're going to put the wall up to replace the plywood boards that are currently located there. So it will keep the water from going down underneath the building. We're going to be doing the work in-house, and it will probably take place over the next two to three weeks.
Thank you.
Sure.
I had quite, I had been asked about it by a couple people, wanted to bring it up.
Sure.
Great. I don't have anything else. I think you two summarized it quite, quite well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Saying none, finance and government performance, Gina?
Yeah, we had a meeting previous to this one where the Finance Committee discussed the upcoming budget and needing to start to take a look at that.
Bless you.
Thank you.
And we also discussed the need to start succession planning for 2021 for the replacement, the eventual replacement of Dawn when he retires, and then the subsequent replacement of Ralph when he retires. So those are, that's planning that needs to start to happen now. And we will have a work session next council meeting to look at the budget, is that right?
Yes.
Right. Okay, okay. And then on the agenda, it says RFPs for Police Policy Review.
I, I did, I did a little bit of footwork on that, Gina.
Okay.
Basically, I contacted, you know, the current firm that we use for HR services. And I have some very rough numbers, depending on what we would like done. And then I have contacted, reached out to the firm that did the webinars. I'm waiting to hear back, but I'll keep you updated as we get more information.
And then in your packet was the 2019 audit report. I did not read through it all yet, but it is there for your review. Yeah.
I did a quick glance through it, and it looks like we're, we are good. And again, I need to thank Lori for all of her work.
Yeah.
As always.
We have paper copies, if anybody wants any, you know, we have paper copies here, but I think they sent you the digital copy, of course.
I might reach out to you for a paper copy. Knowledge is power, so. All right, I do not have anything else for finance. Are there any questions from council?
Okay, saying none. Melissa, do you want to do Parks and Recreation?
Sure. Our committee met last week, and we spoke about the trick-or-trot special event. I believe the map is in your packet. After meeting with Annie Dombrowski from the YMCA, she answered every question that I and Joanne had. She, they will have staggered starts, so not all runners will run together. They will have different areas for social distance check-in. And you can see from her email that the route will go from the YMCA down to Potter Street, where it will make a left. It will go down on Potter, near Reynolds Park, and turn around, and then it will go down Potter, cut over to Dunlop, go around the waterfront, up the steps, across the street, through the park, and we're hoping that the new bridge is open at that time. And then they'll do a loop through Cali Rand Figure Eight. So what I need is, I will make a motion to approve the YMCA's trick-or-trot 2021, 2020 event with the route as stated.
I can do.
So Melissa, Hmboski and Prendergast?
That'll work.
Okay. To clarify that, it's, the motion would be to approve the route as shown on the map with the option to use the new pedestrian bridge if completed by the time of the event. The way that map is shown, it actually is going along Water Street for a short period up to the Sculpture Garden and back in. So it will just have to depend on whether the bridge is done or not. And also with the, Melissa, does that include the inclusion of the insurance liability?
Yes, her map does not show Water Street. I know that she talked, we talked about it in the meeting, but her map does not show that.
Okay.
The alternative would be for the rider, the runners to run a brief portion near Water Street, but we're hopeful that but we're hopeful that the bridge will be completed by then.
What was the date on that, Melissa?
It is October
Yeah, thirty first.
Thirty one.
Yep.
Thank you.
For Halloween.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is conditional on them getting the PennDOT approvals as well, correct?
I think it's more or less a moving closure. It's not, but we'll, we'll do some checking, but it should be relatively easy. They're staying off mainly all the state routes except just crossing. So it should be a lot easier.
Does it include our police?
I think they said they had, they, they had worked with the fire police, but it, it's on them to have them. I did ask somewhere along the way and they said they had, they've been in touch with them and they're expecting them to help with traffic control.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Joanne, but I wanted to let Melissa know the new brackets came in today and they were working on it. So I would say things are looking pretty good to, for the, the pedestrian bridge to be completed by the time this occurs.
Thanks, Don.
Anything else? Seeing none? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Continue, Melissa.
My other update from our meeting is we discussed Kraus Park. We'll continue to monitor the park and our staff will go through and make sure that it's clear of refuse. We also talked about long-range planning, about reaching out to different entities to discuss the stream bank mitigation to curb the erosion. So that's a long-term plan.
Any questions?
And that is
On the Kraus Park?
That is all we, go on. That's all we discussed in our meeting. So a Kepler update will probably come from Dawn.
I do have a comment on the Kraus Park thing. Somebody was mentioning that those Tree of Heaven that are growing up along the bank over there, they are a preferred target for the spotted lantern fly. And if we get ahold of Penn State Extension, they can help us mitigate. I'm not sure exactly how that works. But that might be something we should look into.
Ralph, do you want to check into that?
Sure.
Mike, do you know if that, is that, I didn't know there was Tree of Heaven down there. Do you know of other places in the borough where those trees are?
Everywhere, there's
They're everywhere.
City, I call them city trees. They grow, they grow everywhere. They grow out of cracks in the wall.
I just never noticed them, but yeah, those are, those are not trees we want to have.
They're terribly invasive. I have, I have them in my little native plot. If you have one or two coming up, the best thing you can do, get down as close to the root as you can and pour boiling water on it.
After you cut it down.
Yeah, because close to the root as you can, pour boiling water down there.
Yeah.
My, my wife is often threatened to go down to Kraus Park with whoppers and cut the things down, so.
Yeah.
Melissa, I apologize for not getting back to you. I, I had a call from Mike Musser. I think it was last week. He, he sits on the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority on behalf of Borough Council. He just wanted to let us know that the contract for Keppa Pool is moving forward. Then they're not really sure on a timeframe yet. It could be that the pool will be down next summer or if things work out exactly the way they want, it might be that they'll get it done early and be able to open sometime midsummer. But they were moving forward with removing the, I can't think of the term, in a pool, the thing that goes around the inside.
The liner.
Thank you, Anne, very much for that. I couldn't think of the word, but they're looking at, beginning to remove the liner right now. So that was the update that he provided to us. And I, again, I apologize for not getting that out to you, Melissa.
Thank you, Don. I have nothing further.
Anything else for Parks and Rec? Seeing none, moving on to Human Resources, John?
Okay, I'm actually, since these are people that are directly reporting to Ralph, I'm going to turn this over to Ralph, the two topic areas.
Oh, I just say, you know, there are some openings. The first one involves someone leaving. And we're going through, because we're a unionized workforce, we post that position inside. And there, there could be an opening soon, or there could be a domino effect where people inside move around. But sooner or later, there, there will likely be an opening, so we'll, we'll keep you posted. Just to clarify, since we have an audience, the current opening is at the wastewater treatment plant, in an operator position. So again, I'll keep you updated on that. Then the other line item is positions were recently filled. We, we have Alyssa Dougherty onboard here in the office that, we just had start with Kathy retired. And then we have two parking personnel onboard that are in the training process. So it'll be a while before they're up to speed, but they're at least onboard and, and all systems are go and communication is good, so we'll, we'll, again, keep you updated on those factors.
Thank you, Ralph.
Sure.
And that's all I have, Joanne, for Human Resources.
Any questions for Human Resources? Seeing none, Randy, do you want to talk about safety?
That can ask me from unmuted. Yep, Fire Committee meeting will be this week, nine twenty-four, Thursday. It starts at seven, should end around eight P M. It's going to be at Lambert Hall. This will be an in-person and virtual both. So I think we have a mix of, of both. And Ralph, I wanted to check with you to see if maybe I could borrow the recorder for that meeting.
Yes.
So I'll, okay, I'll, I'll touch base with you on that. The next item is that the Fire Department put a bid in for the purchase of fire police vehicles. There's two of them that the Alpha Fire Company is selling. And they're F-150 Fords with the boxes on the back, similar to like an ambulance or something like that. That carries equipment and this, these vehicles will be used for fire police, as fire police vehicles for accidents and different things that they're getting called out for. And some of the things that these have, that your current vehicle doesn't have are, are lighting for at night when they're trying to direct traffic and need to be able to be seen. And then just more storage for them. There'll be, plan is to place one vehicle at each station. So the purchase price on, for the both of them is fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And this is all covered within the budget. And that includes the, the insurance as well as, there's repairs, estimated repairs of five to six thousand dollars to get them on the road. There's, you know, the office need taken off, the vehicles and Bellefonte needs added. And then there was some other issues that the vehicles needed. So it's not a bad deal for two vehicles. And, you know, I think looking at, looking at the specs at the office and at the boxes themselves that can be removed from a vehicle and placed on another one is about sixty thousand dollars. So based just on that, buying the vehicles for what they did, it was not too bad. And I'm not sure, I know when we, we talked about this earlier, I talked to Ralph and Dawn about it. Because it concerns the budget, I knew it needed to be approved by the Fire Exec Committee, which that was done at a special meeting last week. And I brought it to tonight's meeting. Basically, I think because it's within the fire budget, I'm not sure that it needs council approval since there's no extra money being needed. I, I thought at one point some of the money wasn't being covered by the budget, but it looks like that changed and is, is able to, they're able to do that. So I, it doesn't matter to me if we can make a motion on it to, I would make a motion to approve. But if we don't need to, then at least you know what the fire department is up to at this point. I was hoping Gary, or Chief Laura would have been able to get on tonight, but I know he is working this evening. So he, he's too good to still show up later. So, so is there any, any questions? I mean, do we need, do we need to have a motion on that, Ralph?
I don't think so, Randy. As you said, really the Fire Executive Committee oversees the fire budget. We just have a share, as, as long as they've said okay to it, I, I feel that we're, we're in good standing.
Okay, yeah, the one thing that, you know, wasn't covered was the insurance, but they'll have to put that in the budget next year. But, you know, they're able to find enough to, to get them on the road for this year.
Right.
The months that are left, so, okay. And that's the end of my report.
Any questions for Randy?
Eric, Andy, are we going to have a, a meeting about the Mass Coordination soon?
I haven't put it on the agenda. I was out of town last week, so I'll try to get something on. Call down tomorrow or give Dawn a call or Ralph and we'll get something on, on the doodle to get a meeting set up.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Moving on to water and sanitation, Doug?
Okay. We have a executive session meeting, legal issue coming up tomorrow, the twenty-second. The authority does, and I'll keep our council appraised of what's going on after that. The other thing I wanted to remind the community that starting October second, Friday, and October third is our community-wide yard sale in the borough. And then the following week, October fifth through the ninth, is our riffraff pickup for residents only. And there are items that are not included in that, such as paint, tires, batteries. What am I missing, Ralph or Dawn?
Basically, we limit the size of the material to like a small pickup or something that one person can pick up off the ground and, and load. So it's kind of a little bit vague, but it, it's not, it's not meant to be clean out your entire garage. It's just things that ordinarily maybe you left lay or were accumulated and you wanted us to take care of them or take them to the transfer station. That's what it's about.
So would that include mattresses, box springs or refrigerators, those kinds of things?
Yes.
So they are not allowed, is that what you're saying?
There are allowed. There are, there are laws about refrigerators and taking the doors off and those kinds of things that are, you know, beyond Bellefonte Borough. You just be aware, you know, for safety reasons, if somebody sets out a refrigerator, they'd be better off to take the door off.
And computers and so on, old computers are not allowed, correct?
I believe that's correct. I think they're in the middle of changing their policies right now. And, and I don't know what the determination is, but I believe you are correct. They have to pay to get rid of computer equipment. So I, generally, they don't take it for free.
Okay, so that's, that's new. The computers are out, right?
I believe that.
They're not allowed.
I, I believe that's correct. I, I can double check on that. That's a transfer.
If you would, I got a couple of those off. If I can't, if I can't dump them in the riffraff, I'll take them up to the transfer station myself.
I'll find.
Ralph, if you could find out what's allowed and what's not allowed and put that on the website, that'll be helpful for the public.
Will do.
And Joanne, you're, you're speaking about our residents, what they cannot and can put out, correct?
Correct.
And Ralph will sort of put a general idea of that on our website, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. One other thing is our, our Russian grass pickup usually starts in October. Or I'm sorry, or leaf pickup. So that's probably what, first or second week of October, Dawn, Ralph?
Basically, you know, it's, is a seasonal thing. The, the truck, yes, to answer your question, we will start sending out the leaf truck in doing, getting what's out. You know, we don't expect a lot to be out or in piles just yet. But yes, in October, we, and I want to bring this up on your street about the alternate street parking. We will start making the rounds and as we get into more of the fall, it'll be more serious. But yes, in October, we're going to start some amount of leaf collection.
And it's never too early to reiterate that we do not want residents raking their leaves down on the street where they plug up storm drains. Break them to the curb and that's where we will, our guys will pick them up from.
Yes, and, and that usually goes on, ends the second Friday in December is what, what I found.
Yeah, unless there's a heavy snow or, or we get snow early, yes, we go as long as we can.
Right, so I just wanted to remind, residents start asking the question, when the leaves start falling? So that, that will start in October and go through to December, exactly what Mr. Stewart said, based on the weather. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions for Doug? Seeing none, moving on to streets, Deb?
Yes, the Streets Committee met last week and there were a number of borough residents attending to give us some input on the new parking meters and the rates. And I think that was clarified for them, that the new meters are twenty-five cents for fifteen minutes if you use a coin and a dollar an hour if you use plastic. The Streets Committee is going to be meeting this week to finalize changes to the parking ordinance, specifically long-term parking permits and also the red meters. And LTAP is going to be representative, will be with us next week to look at a couple of intersections. I have the gamble mill crosswalk from the gamble mill over to the parking lot next to Kraus Park, Blanchard Street and East Bishop Street intersection, and North Monroe Street and the East Lynn Street intersection.
I think we're going to add the crosswalk there and the annex also.
Okay, the potential for that. And could we also, since we're going to be there, have them look just at the layout of the crosswalks at the diamond, since that's been an issue recently?
Excellent idea.
Put in a roundabout.
No, no. Please don't do that, please.
Why not? Safer.
What?
They are safer.
Because, no, no. I lived in New England. They are a nightmare.
No, it's the New England drivers that were a nightmare.
No.
Yeah.
No.
I've driven in Boston. It's, it's the New England drivers.
Yeah, Boston's a lot of times. New Englanders go four or five blocks out of their way to avoid the, honestly, people hate them.
They can't figure them out.
No, it's not that. They're just, they're horrible.
Move with Johnson on this one. We make a big traffic circle. We just have to relocate the whole downtown to do it.
Move the courthouse, yeah, we want to move everything. Oh, the police will just love it.
Okay.
Yeah, you just have to be sure you're in the right spot when you get flung off out into space, that's all.
Yes.
Not how fast you get, the speed limit up to.
Yes, centrifugal force.
Mr. Eaton, these folks, they, they, they're, they're old, you know, they don't understand the new technology.
I saw like, and the next thing you know, you had Michael spinning and going off into infinity there. I was getting scared, Doug.
The aliens are laughing at us.
Let's go, let's move this on.
Yes.
Thank you, Randy.
Go ahead, Deb.
That's, that's pretty much what I've got. Thank you.
Any questions for Deb?
Yeah, when are we going to have a vote on the roundabout?
Okay.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, but I I don't have any questions, but I, I do have one more item. And I, I referenced this a few minutes ago, and that was the alternate street parking. Program or ordinance that we have. We did suspend that, you know, somewhere in the last few months, given. The COVID situation, we felt more people were, well, first there was a stay-at-home order. And then we thought, you know, more people were working from home. Uh, but a- as we talked a minute or two ago. We are definitely going to get into leaf collection. And it's important for our trucks to get near the curb. And we use the alternate street parking program. At night, uh, to, to get people to comply or get us, allow us. To do one side of the street one night and then another night, the other night, you know, the other side and so on. And of course, when we get into winter, it'll be snow removal with the same program. Uh, I'm proposing that we re- restart. Or do away with this, with the suspension of alternate street parking, starting October first. Which is, I believe is a Thursday.
Ralph, could I interject here? I think at our last meeting, we already did that. I saw it in the minutes, I'm pretty sure.
Uh, I, if we did, I didn't recall a date or anything. Uh, that's my rec- my recollection.
Well, I'm pretty sure there was a motion made and passed, and it was just basically gonna be taking the sign, the covers off the signs.
Yeah, I think, I think Randy is correct.
Okay, I, did we come up with a date? I was thinking, uh, you know, October first, if that's all right.
We may need a motion for the date, but we did say to re, to end the moratorium.
I'll make the motion to, uh, start the, uh, alternate street parking, October first, twenty twenty. Thank you.
I'll second that.
So, Johnson and Prendergast. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I think, I think the only additional thing is that. In the meeting last week, we discussed, uh, street sweeping along Allegheny Street. And what we decided to do, and this was to have it instead of doing it twice a week. Reducing it to once a week. With one week doing on one side, and once we get the alternate street parking doing. We'll do one, one week and then the other side the next week. And then that additional time that's made available for street cleaning will be. Pushed based on, uh, Ralph and Don's recommendations to the rest of the town. So the rest of town may be getting some more street clean.
Uh, we did put that into effect, and, uh, you know, we're only a couple more weeks of September. And then we're done because of the leaf collection and so on, but it is, we did put that message into effect.
Anything else for streets? Seeing that, seeing none then, moving on to environment and energy, Mike?
Yeah, um, we did get a, uh, sustainability thing about the Tallyran Park. Project, they're moving along with that. Um, I'm not sure if there's anything else, uh. Going on the, uh, sustainability. And as far as the, uh, we also have the. Uh, Balfour Climate Action Plan. That, uh, did you wanna say something about it?
Uh, we need a motion to approve the plan, it's been.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Is there is something you wanna say before we go to that?
Uh, you need to make the motion first.
Okay, make a motion, we, uh. Approve the Balfour Climate Action Plan? I assume we have all the edits in?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Clayton, Prendergast and Clayton. So basically this, uh, just to summarize for the public. This was a plan that has been developed over the last year. Uh, with input from the, from, uh, ICLI, which is a, uh. And the DEP and a student intern that we had, and then we had, uh, a, uh. Survey of the community as well as a, a task force, and then once the report was, uh, written, we had. It was open up for comments over the last month and a half. We received the comments, made the editors that were recommended. Uh, the last meeting, we, uh, presented it as edited, and this evening what we're doing is accepting the, uh. Climate change plan as amended, and if it passes, then we will. Then start the process with the consultant that, uh, that Doc, that the DEP is giving us for free for the next year. Yes, Doc?
What's it costing the borough?
Nothing right now.
Well, that was one of the questions I had submitted. And, and the, this, this, the, the goals that were there that were showing, I said about to piggyback. With quarters dropping in it, I couldn't tell whether they were going in or coming out. And that was the question I had, that. It didn't cover the money that's gonna have to be spent to do some of these programs over the next thirty years.
Yeah, so basically if this works out. If, if this works out as presented, then it actually will save us money over the next thirty years. There will be some upfront funds cost. But in the long run, it will actually save us money because of the reduced cost for, uh. Related to, uh, climate change, to, uh. Maintenance and electricity and, uh. Flooding issues that we, we were having, so. And in one year, there may be. Some increased cost, but in the long term, there should be reduced cost.
Right, but that, that long term could last forever, and we know, we have nothing to compare it to as to what this, these projects would cost. We have nothing, nothing there. There's no benchmarks to what our, our cost might, not even an estimate of what the cost might be.
So, yeah, I think.
The study.
Yeah, that's part of what the consultant is gonna be able to help us with.
Does, has this been put on the, the Bellefonte Borough website? Are you basing this only on the survey that was put out?
This was put out, supposed to be posted a couple of weeks ago.
On the Bellefonte Borough website, the action plan?
Yes.
I missed it. I did see it originally. I didn't know it was, I missed this in the agenda. I wa- I should have read through it again, and I did not. I, I'm gonna have to vote no at this time for this, because I, I need more information to, to go through with this.
Yeah, to be honest, when I saw this, when I saw that come out and asking for input, I thought that we, you know. Most of my questions, or all my questions were addressed. And I thought what would happen is we would see, whatever we had requested would then be filled in somewhere to show. You know, where the costs were, because that was, that was one of the big things is. That there's no.
Believe that.
There's no one who's ever even spoken about it. I mean, we don't know what that's gonna cost.
Uh, I, you know, having been part of this process for over a year, I, I, I would just say, you know, the. The plan is actually just made up of goals, things, milestones, that. You know, the borough would like to hit. It, it doesn't say anything about you have to do these opportunities, funding opportunities, just like we had for. Uh, the electrical vehicle charging stations, for example. That's one area where, you know, it would have met a goal at almost no cost to the borough, so. And I would imagine that over the next fifteen or twenty years, this is only gonna, uh, you know, become more bigger. And there's gonna be more opportunities for funding and to fund some of the things that you wanna, you know, that you have in your plan, but you don't have to do it all.
So will other councils that follow us be able to go in and make changes?
Yes.
So it's, it's a living, moving. Okay.
Yeah. It is, as technology changes, has the knowledge changes, the. The plan will take, it's not something that's completely set in stone. It's just a starting point.
Yeah, I, I just, I vaguely remember, you know. Making us have electric vehicles by some year, certain things that were required. Uh, it, it, well, it, it, you know, there again, it's the government telling us what we have to do, and I'm. I, I just haven't read it close enough to make a good decision tonight, so because of that, I'm gonna vote no. I, I don't recall it as well as I should have. Do you recall it, Mike?
No, I'm just saying that a lot of it's gonna be what the consultant recommends, whether we, whether we take it or not, it's. A future decision.
Well, can you quote some of the things that we're voting on in that mitigation?
No, I'm go, oh, I'm saying as we're, we're looking at the plan. I can't quote you because it's, I don't have it right in front of me, but the, the plan is just to have the consultant and. Um, make a plan.
There is, there is a guidelines, I, I remember reading it, and if you can't remember any of it, I don't know how you can vote on. In favor of it.
I kind of view it as the county's long-range, um, plans for traffic. It's a kind of a wish list of what you want to have happen. But it's not a mandate, it's just a kind of outline for what would be great to have. To make the world more green, or at least our, our, and our little. Town more green, so I don't think it's a mandate. I don't think it's gonna cost us anything if we don't wanna spend the money. It's just kind of like, these are night, things that would be nice to have.
These are our goals.
Right, but there, there, there is verbiage in there that does say required, and I think I brought that up in, in some of my comments as well. That we changed required to recommend it.
I think that was generally done, Randy.
Randy, that's why I'm not comfortable voting for it in favor of it.
Been a while since I've looked at it.
A month from now I would be, but, uh, not tonight, I'm, because I can't quote any of the. Guidelines that were in it. I, I don't remember it, and it's shame on me. I should have reread it and I did not. But I'm not comfortable voting for it tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd ask council, how many of you actually read it and know what's in it right now?
I, I read it, but, uh. My short-term memory is not that good.
I, I've seen like three.
I do, I did, I, I liked what I read. That's all I can tell you.
Yeah, I mean, I read through it and I'm kind of, I, what Melissa said, I don't wanna repeat, and you know, that's. How I feel about it.
Um, I read it and felt that what they were doing was just making some very helpful suggestions for moving forward. It didn't. Sound like an edict that this is what we're going to have to do. It was just very. I don't, progressive options.
I read it, but it was a long time ago. I cannot find it, and if I could find it again, I would read through it again and. Feel more comfortable with it.
Honestly, Joanne, the only thing, the only thing I saw come back was when you, the one, the, the one you sent me that had. Uh, answered my questions and where, where I could find things. I didn't, I did not see a rewrite of it, if, if a rewrite was done.
They, there were edits that were done based on your comments.
I know, but I didn't see it come back out as re.
I think it was in the last.
Two, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, it came out, uh, and was given to as, uh. In our packet, and then we asked to have it posted on the website. And we will be voting on it this evening.
So it's on the website now?
Yeah, I'm looking at the website right now. I.
Okay, very good.
Doesn't mean it's not there. I see Climate Action Plan, but it doesn't take me to it, but that could be my computer illiteracy. Uh, not being able to find it. Anyway, I said, I, I, I'm not comfortable voting for it tonight, uh, but that's just me. I'm, I'm happy to revisit it in a month or two after I reread. But tonight, I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no.
Would you be comfortable with a two-week delay?
Sure, I, I just, you know, I, I can't vote on something that I don't recall reading. I, I recall reading it, but I don't remember specifics, so I have to vote no tonight, but I would be very happy to revisit it.
Well, since the motion, was the motion seconded?
Yes, the motion was seconded.
Okay, so we'd have to make an amendment. To redo it, uh, to postpone for till the next meeting.
Is this gonna have any impact on, um, uh. DEP, I mean, I, I know they wanted to hear that we pass the.
That, as I understood from DEP, they wanted to hear from us. Now so that they can get, consultant has already been hired. It's just a matter of us passing the acceptance of the action plan so we can get started. I don't know. If delaying it would cause a problem.
Yeah, I, I don't know. In addition, we have the, we've already told them that we wanted in with the consultant, so.
Right.
Can I just call the question then?
Yes, you can. Any objections to calling the question?
None at all.
No. Seeing none, since there does seem to be some opposition, Ralph, can you do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Eaton?
Aye.
Ms. Amboski?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Prendergast?
Yay.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Blackbill?
Enthusiastic.
No. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
The, it looks like seven yeses and two no's.
So the motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Joanne, uh, could you, since you did the edits on that, uh, could you send me the final version so I can forward that off to Heidi? She wants to put it on the DEP website.
Uh, you should already have it, but I can send it to you again.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure that I do, so if you could just resend it tomorrow, that'd be great.
Might as well send it to all of us.
Yeah.
That would be great.
That would be nice to see the final version after we vote them.
With the sunshine law, I will send it to Don and he can send it to all of you. Cause I'm not allowed to send it to all nine of us.
Thank you.
Fine, that's fine, Joanne, thank you.
That's all I have for energy and environment.
The last one is also in your packet from last month or last week.
What was that?
You wanna read it? It's available in your packet from nine eight twenty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Any other questions for Mike?
Um, I have a question. Uh, last, I, I think it was last year, there was a representative before council who. Was proposing, uh, a solar panel array somewhere in the borough. What happened with that project?
So what happened was they responded to us, asked us to meet again with. With the, uh, uh, the environmental committee. We asked them to hold off until after the climate action plan was accepted. Because the climate action plan included the, uh, plans for, uh, solar power for the borough. So now that it is passed, we can go ahead and set up a meeting with them to see what. Where we could go forward.
Okay.
In consultation with this consultant.
Okay, thank you.
So, that gives you marching orders, Ralph and Don.
Great.
Uh, Joanne, uh, can I make a point or make a request?
Sure.
Um, you know, and thanks, Melissa, for pointing out where that was. Uh, it did jog my memory. In the future. Can we, can we get a copy of a document like that that has all of the revisions made? And then another copy that might be tracking the revisions? Because looking at the document, it jogged my memory, uh, completely, that I became so frustrated. With all the revision tracking. In the copy that was posted. Uh, that I, I actually gave up reading the document after a while. So please, if we're gonna, you know, get a, a PDF, make it a PDF of the final, not PDF of, with track changes. It makes, very frustrating to read.
Okay. It's kind of interesting because I, because a couple of years ago, we were asked to do. It's kind of interesting because I, because a couple of years ago, we were asked to do just the opposite.
Yeah.
I, I, and I understand that you're, yeah, I understand, I understand where it's coming from, but once you get enough changes, it's hard to figure out which is the one that's actually the final piece.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Fully understood. Uh, okay, moving on, we've got special committee reports. Uh, the first one is mine, it's the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. We met on, last Wednesday on September sixteenth, we discussed the One Water Report. And due to COVID nineteen, the plans for presenting this, uh, report to the municipalities has been put on hold until the economy returns to some semblance of normality. Meanwhile, uh, the commission is going to start looking at information on grants and programs from government agencies, businesses and nonprofits that could help fund the project of past. Will continue working on a video presentation for the municipalities and will be conducting a needs assessment with the public to better find out what gaps or needs could be answered or addressed with a one water plan. Should we move forward with that and what they think such a, they should be added in such a plan? That's my report. Any questions? Okay, saying none, Doug, you want to talk about the C C M P O grant announcement?
Well, I, I have to plead ignorance, I, I don't have an idea what the grant announcement is.
I sent you a text, Doug, earlier and I, it's, it's mislabeled. It should have been labeled, uh, Penn Dots Multi-Modal Grant Opportunity. Multi-modal as in bicycle ways and pathways and so on. Uh, so we did receive this, you know, announcement, grant application. And let me see what else I have noted here about it. Well, I, I mean, basically it's a grant opportunity, I think there's a thirty percent local match minimum. And we have to, uh, four, four P M, November sixth to submit the application, so. You know, we'll, uh, Don and myself can start looking at some possibilities and bring it back to either in a work session or one of the committees. But, or, or through Doug's committee. But it's just a grant opportunity, it's actually, should have been labeled Penn Dots Opportunity.
Okay. Um, does that answer your question, Joanne?
Yeah.
Well, uh, we do have an M P O meeting Tuesday, September twenty-second, and that is to accept, there's several. There's eleven items on the agenda, uh, but one is to, uh, approve the long-range transportation plan. And I did want to read the letter, I don't know if y'all received the copy of what Ralph wrote to the M P O, did, did y'all receive that or not?
I don't worry about recall it.
No, I don't think I.
Okay, well, I'll read it real quick if you don't mind, on behalf of the Bellefonte Borough Council, I'm writing to provide comments on the above referenced long-range transportation pan, plan. Please make it a high priority to address transportation issues related to State Route one fifty corridor Bellefonte Borough, the issues include Phoenix Avenue and Mill Street intersection. We talked about these at last, uh, uh, last month's meeting. Uh, the redevelopment of the formal, former Zero Complex in Spring Township related traffic on State Route one forty-four coming in through Bellefonte, through the borough. And, uh, Ralph, uh, included, which was very good, pedestrian and bicycle access to and from the former, former Zero Building Complex. Um, the M P O staff acknowledged that they received the letter and they go through several paragraphs explaining what the response is. We're on the long-term plan, but not the tip with this project. Now, they did say that, um, this small section of Bellefonte Borough and Spring Township, blah, blah, tremendous, but I don't, um, I wanted to get off, repairs to the stone wall supporting, this is from the M P O, by the way. Repairs to the stone wall supporting Route one fifty along Spring Creek are included as part of Penn Dot's twenty twenty bridge preservation project, which is funded on the twenty nineteen, twenty-two and twenty-one, twenty-four tips. Repair should be completed in the next year, so what I thought was going to be a big, major project, it appears as though uh, they're doing them separately.
Okay.
That's, that's going to be acted upon, um, or, or the long-range plan and the tip is going to be voted on Tuesday night.
So, so Doug, this is related to the, uh, environment thing, the project that we have down at Tally Rand Park. Once you all get the agreement for that wall repairs, we need to refer that information over to the students that are working on the Spring Creek project because they were going to be looking at that as well to make recommendations for the town.
Okay, as soon as I hear something's happening, I will certainly let you know.
Thank you.
Good man, Doug.
So far, so good. Any questions?
Well, if they're going to do the repairs, uh, uh, do they, will they be changing the location of the wall or is that part of their, or within their, uh, their design envelope?
I would, I don't know the correct answer to that, I, I suspect that they'll make repairs to the existing wall as it's configured now. I don't believe they have any idea that the students are taking a look at the flow of the water.
Right, but I'm saying, do they, I'm saying, are they going to exercise the freedom to relocate that wall if they need to, to make, or to stabilize the road?
How can they re, how can they move the wall?
At the point of order, we're kind of getting off the, off the track here a little bit, I mean, this, this stuff needs to be caught up through with engineers as far as relocating walls and things like that, and we're nowhere near a discussion of what we can do at this point, I mean, I think they're good ideas or wherever, I remember talking about it, but I don't think this is the time.
John, I will be happy to bring that up with the M P O, uh, folks at, at the meeting, uh, tomorrow, Tuesday.
So, so maybe you two can have a, an offline discussion about that.
Right, I can.
You're the engineer and the rest of us don't really know a whole lot about this.
Uh, that's.
Yeah, John.
Yeah. Just asking the question when they talk about repairs, what that means.
I think it's a good question if, if they, my concern is I don't want to delay what's going to happen.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it's like part, part of what they're going to do, so, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion or special committee reports?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Let me do that, Gina?
Yeah, it's okay.
Go ahead, ladies first.
Thanks, I just had a couple of updates from, uh, downtown Bellefonte Inc. Um, we had a, um, Rock the Block Community Cleanup Event that was scheduled for October eighth and ninth. That has been postponed until the spring due to COVID. That only affected the, um, one fifty Benner Pike Corridor, but I just wanted to let the public know for anyone that lives in that corridor. Um, also, this Friday is Friday in the Font, and we have, um, live music outside, uh, Confer Strollers, courtesy of Confer Strollers from five to seven. And then the Bellefonte Community Band is going to play from, um, six thirty to seven thirty at the gazebo. And, uh, we'll have the Easter lights, uh, strung up in the park for that, so come on out to Friday in the Font. And, um, the Richard Knapp Heritage Center is, uh, has its grand opening, it's ribbon cutting at one P M on Friday as well. Friday, the twenty-fifth, and then that's, they'll be open until eight P M that night, so.
Gina, I just have a question on the Rock the Block, does that mean the role that we had on Saturday morning is now canceled?
Yes.
Okay, no one has said anything to us.
Yeah, okay, I'll make sure that you guys get in the loop on that one.
And related to that, the Wayfinding Grant, uh, with the final designs for the logo and signage, we will be, will be presented during oral presentation at our next council meeting.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Okay, I had, I had one thing on the Safer Grant, uh, Don Hordeman, myself, Walt Snyder have a meeting with Nick Capoto, who is our manager of the grant, the Safer Grant, uh, with the fire department. And, uh, I, I think we had to cancel the last meeting, I think may, maybe Don and Nick talked a little bit, but we couldn't get hooked together with everybody for some reason. Uh, so, but we do have another meeting, uh, this Friday and continue to hold one, I think plan to hold one every Friday, last Friday each month moving forward. That's, and this is a virtual meeting, so I just wanted to let you know what we're up to. That's all I have.
Any questions? Saying none? Okay, move on then to Office of Community Affairs.
Sure, I just have a note, uh, the planning commission did not meet this month. Uh, there really wasn't any items on the agenda per se as far as plan approvals. Uh, the Harb had a meeting recently and they reviewed a project and recommended approval or cert, uh, approval for council to issue a certificate of appropriateness. And that is for one sixty Dunlap Street or the Gimble Mill property. And they basically made some revisions to the doorways that that, and the, some of the project that was previously approved.
What we'll need is a motion to approve the changes to the previously approved certificate of appropriateness. The changes for the public include some changes to the black tram as well as resealing of the brick, changing the doormers and redesign the entrance space of the main entrances and the proposed waterfront area.
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Who is seconding? Prendergast and friend, okay, Blackbill and Prendergast. Discussion?
I'll have to recuse myself.
Okay, you'll need to fill out the, the form.
Yeah.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous with extension from Amboski?
Got it. Uh, next item, I just have a note about the High Street Shops, which is a building on West High Street. Uh, someone mentioned that some paint colors had changed on the side of the building. I took a look through our records, I did not locate anything, any certificates or anywhere where I saw that the project was approved. Uh, so I will be contacting the property owner and letting him know that I didn't find anything, that if they have something to submit it to me. Otherwise, they need to go through the review process, even, you know, post pro, uh, project, uh, even, we, that's what we usually do, uh, when these things happen, so I'll be working on that.
Any questions? Saying none, we'll move on to old business.
Look here. Uh, let me just go over a couple of these, Spring Township, uh, we contacted them about meeting about the intersection there at Pine Mill Route one forty-four, as well as discussing, uh, you know, police services, what they do, what we do and those types of things, uh, and I, I sent a letter and their manager contacted me about, could I come over? And, you know, better explain what, what we were looking at, what we wanted to do it with each project, so I have a meeting this Wednesday to do that. Yeah, so I'll report back and I'm sure that manager will take it to their board, uh, and, you know, any feedback, I'll bring it back to you. There's a couple other items, letters to Representative Benninghoff and Senator Corman regarding a solvency. Those letters have been sent, I'm waiting to hear. Um, I understand their staff has said that they will try to be, uh, make sure that our elected officials are supportive of this. Uh, I have another note that's not on the agenda, the Zion Road meetings that we usually have on as old business. Uh, I have since requested the, the stormwater mapping for that area from Penn Dot, just to make sure that, that the roadways are potentially causing a problem. Uh, I, as I thought about it, was working on getting a meeting. I wanted to have a little bit more factual evidence that, uh, the problem was as a result of getting worse directly related to the storm drains along Zion Road, so uh, I'm optimistic that either way, the mapping will show me that it does or does not, you know, uh, cause a problem. But, uh, I'm working on that, we don't have a date yet, but once I get the maps, you know, we'll move further with, with the date. I believe that's all I have, uh, listed, if there's something else, I'm able to try to answer your questions.
Anything else for old business?
Our legal response on the fireworks, I, I remember we talked about it last meeting, I don't know if they'd responded yet.
I don't think we have anything dependent to Randy, I'll check on the.
Okay, this, I just follow up on it.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Then we'll move on to new business.
This, the first items are in relation to the C D B G project and our, our streetscape project, I'll leave maybe Dawn to go over that.
Uh, put a memo in your packet, uh, in regard to the twenty twenty application, which is due, uh, next week. So as you know, C D C O G is putting together our application. I put a project that I believe I heard council discuss, uh, previously. Uh, I had to get C D C O G's requesting an estimate, so I had to go out and get an engineer's estimate on the, uh, project, came in around two hundred and twenty thousand. So this would be a multi-year project, so we'd be using twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one funds. Uh, I think Gina some time ago provided a picture of, uh, uh, Dirk and Edson, what the, you know, something that, uh, of how it would look with some, we'd be talking some curbing, new sidewalks, some streetscape uh, improvement such as, uh, 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 trees and some, uh, ornamental, uh, 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 bushes and so forth, uh, and I, uh, the bit I, uh, for the estimate I had done, I had it done from Cherry Lane uh, on South Spring, up around the corner to West Bishop, down to Perry Lane, fixing the sidewalks, that would uh, complete everything, we had a streetscape project that ended at Perry uh, the last time back in two thousand and twelve, so this would finish that all out, and in addition to that, uh, we would work with the folks at Smokers Express to, uh, revise that parking lot, uh, in, driving in and driving out one way. Uh, as we had, uh, trans associates look at for us, the engineering firm some time ago, so uh, the proposal for the C D B G, uh, twenty twenty application would be a streetscape project on Norse, or South Spring Street and West Bishop Street, and it would be a multi-year project.
So we need a motion to prove a streetscape safety improvement project for South Spring Street and West Bishop Street.
Make that motion.
Uh, that was eaten, and who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, proved unanimously.
Next item is, uh, in regard to the trick-or-treat, uh, event recognized by the community. Usually the thirty-first sixty-eight, although there's been occasions where we moved it for football or weather or what have you. Uh, you know, this year we're dealing with, of course, COVID and social distancing and those kinds of things. I don't think we have to worry about people wearing masks, but. Anyway, uh, you know, the question has come up, we're getting a few calls and even from, uh, Spring Township, you know, what, are we going to do anything different? I, I can tell you the sense is, you know, that it's, you know, maybe keep it optional, if people want to participate, you know, they leave their life. You know, they leave their light on, they participate or they don't, they leave their light off and that kind of thing, uh, versus the borough deciding. You know, yes, it's on or no, it's not or whatever. But I, I think Spring Township, for what it's worth, is going to leave it go. And uh, you know, leave it occur. Uh, but you know, as we get closer to the thirty-first, there'll be more questions and those kinds of things.
Ralph, that's not a bad idea with light, you know, using your lights, uh, to have them on, that would be a signal to people that
Yes.
come up, uh, because I, I could feel that there's residents out there that probably won't participate. And at least we're giving people, alerting them to what to look for, what signal to look for, whether they should go up or not go up.
And like, that's pretty common. We use Randy every year. You know, if a resident doesn't want to participate, they turn their porch light off. I mean, that's kind of the signal that you're not interested.
It's a signal, but sometimes it's misread.
Yeah.
True.
I assume we need a motion to hold October thirty-first as from six to eight o'clock?
Well, I believe we already did that, like maybe even back in January when we were setting dates. But because now nobody knew COVID was happening. I'm just, I'm bringing this up more or less to say I'm getting questions, we're getting calls. People are starting to think about, is it on or is it off because of COVID?
So would, so to help the public, would it be helpful to make a motion that is an optional uh, event?
I think so. Then we, we just tell people right from the get, you know, you know, that, that's what's been decided.
Do we have such a motion?
Really need a motion for that? If it's a, it's always optional.
I know, it is.
It's never not optional.
I'm just saying, we're getting calls. I guess as long as we're saying.
Ralph, it's on. Just if people want to participate, the light's on. Go trick or treating. Okay, six to eight, October thirty-first.
Okay, right.
We already, we already approved it back in January. Unless, unless we're canceling it, then we need to make a motion to cancel it. Otherwise.
I think Doug's right.
I, I agree.
All right, that's all we'll go with.
Okay.
All right, then the next item here is this uh, minimum municipal obligation or MMO related to our pension plans. As you recall, the last council meeting, we, we, we approved two of the three plans. Uh, we did not have the numbers on the defined benefit plan, which is this one. That's in your packet and on the agenda for approval. It's basically showing a budget number for two thousand and twenty-one of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. We're asking that the plan be approved.
I need a motion to that fact.
Move Brackville.
I'll second it.
Brackville and Clayton. Discussion?
Uh, Eaton, uh, Ralph, being that that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what it's been for the last three years. Is there a possibility that's not correct?
There, there is a possibility, John. As you, as you know, uh, we've been waiting and waiting for this number. Uh, and Barbie said the same thing. Barbie's our, kind of our in-house administrator. Uh, you know, it's, it's a payroll percentage. You know, I, I generally agree with the number. I mean, if you take the percentage and go down through uh, and they were, the numbers were provided by PMRS, but you know, maybe there is something we're missing. If, if we go back, I mean, we could always amend it. But uh, I mean, they are the numbers that were given to us and they based on a proposed payroll.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with us accepting it. But I would definitely go back and specifically item E. Uh, the amortization of the unfunded liability. I mean, that just doesn't look right from everything we've seen for the last you know, four years. So I mean, I'm okay with accepting it as long as they're saying this is a good number.
Why don't we, I would ask you to accept it since, I mean, the numbers just came in today. Uh, we'll go back and ask them to check that number and all the numbers. And if there's any amendments, we'll have it, you know, at the next meeting.
So let me ask this question then. Should we amend the motion to request a, a review and make amendments if needed? Or can, is that something that can automatically be done?
My understanding with all of these are there to be approved by the end of September each year. I would rather have you do that. And then we make an amendment later. At least these were in compliance with having the plan approved. If there's some number that is in error, you know, we make that part of a new motion or amendment.
As long as that's in the record, I'd be ha, okay with that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously with that caveat.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
I, I believe that's all I have.
I have one thing.
Go ahead.
Doug, do, do you want to go first, Doug?
No, you go ahead, Melissa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, my, I, my term as a library center county, uh, library, center county library trustee comes to an end in December of this year. Um, I think it is a benefit to have a council member sit on that board, but it's not um mandatory. I just think because uh, our borough does give them a good chunk of change that it's beneficial to have someone as an advocate, sit on that trustee board. Um, so if anyone would like to uh, sit as a trustee beginning in January, please let me know. If you know anyone who would enjoy being a trustee, it was a fun experience. It was fine. Um, also let me know and I'll connect you with the um, proper person. Um, the, whoever takes my seat just needs to be a resident of Bellefonte. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Doug, did you have something?
Yeah, yeah, just a quick question. Um, have we heard anything from our, uh, Delta group that's doing the the survey of the borough efficiency or they were, they were going to present council with results of, of what they did for us? Any word of when that might be happening?
I would think, I haven't heard anything, Doug, but I would think soon. Uh, my understanding is that I believe they collected, had finished all the interviews and collected all the information. But uh, I would suspect that upcoming meeting will have them scheduled.
We'll contact Teresa tomorrow, Doug, and ask her when they think they're going to be finished and present. Get, get that back out to you.
Thank you very much. Sure.
Okay, sorry, I keep going in and out. My computer's dying.
Okay.
Okay, I'm still here.
All right.
It's like an old Doctor Who episode.
So is there any other uh, new business? Or any other public comments? We do have one person from the public here. If you'd like to make any comments, you may. Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Friendergast, who's going second?
I'll second it.
Uh, I think I heard Randy first. So seconded by Brackville.
Amazing how little, little enthusiasm for that. You don't want to stay on for another hour, I don't know.
It's early, come on.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned at nine twelve P M. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Stay safe.
Hey, Mike.
Good night, guys.
I'll be in touch with you tomorrow about the computer. If you're home, I'll just drop it off.
I won't be home till four thirty.
Executive committee, executive session, so don't leave. Seen it, does need to leave, Express needs to leave and Monteca needs to leave and then we'll hold our executive session.
Okay.
Yes, hang tight here.
Glad you said something.